Okay, item two on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the meeting February 7.
So moved.
Okay, motion made second. Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Confirmation of future meeting dates, we have March 7th and March 21st.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay, fine with that as well. Item four is citizen speak. Before we start citizen speak, I know there are a ton of people here. Is everybody here to talk about Runway 33? Is that basically what people are here or is it a bunch of different things?
I'm in the real estate.
Okay. I do ask that if you are here to talk about Runway 33, that keep it brief. You know, we had an extensive meeting a few weeks ago on it. We heard everybody. We intend to write a letter expressing the concerns of the residents of Milton. It will be done before the deadline. So, you know, if it just come up and say the noise is too loud, we believe you. The noise is too loud. We all know it's too loud. So, you know, just keep it brief. But with that, I will recognize citizen speak. So anybody?
Tom, can we take the Girl Scouts first?
Oh, sure.
We have a girl scout.
Okay.
They have to get home to do their homework.
Okay. So, one quick minute. We have item five on the agenda is the approval of April 7, 2013, Girl Scout Walk for the Animal Shelter. Okay, come on in, girls. Go on in, you're on. And you can also yourself a TV too, isn't that great? So do you want to explain a little bit about your walk and what you have to do?
Yeah, sure. Well, we're a Girl Scout troop 74151, and before we ask for your approval, we're going to introduce ourselves.
Sure.
I'm Lydia Papil, Kate Posse, Maya Shinda, Christina Gioso, Molly Theobald, Caroline O'Connell, and Catherine Tracy. We are here to ask your permission for a walk. This will benefit the animal shelter. The walk will help us earn our bronze award, and the bronze award is the highest award that a junior girl scout can earn.
You came prepared.
Two miles?
It's a two mile walk. That's a long way.
So as you can see, I've gave you the route for the animal shelter, for the walk. We confirmed the walk with Kevin Foley, who works at the police station. There will be parking at the high school. The walk will start and end at the high school. There will be a water stand at the Milton Animal Shelter, and we will have chaperones at the key corners. Also, the police officer will direct us.
Now, is this to raise money for the construction of new animal shelter, or is it just to support the shelter?
Um, this walk will benefit the animal shelter, because on the day of the walk, we will be accepting donations. In order to get your number, each walker must bring, like, we decided on kongs or Kong stuffing, cardboard scratch pads, and fuzzy mouse toys, or if you can't find any of that stuff, money. The date of the walk is April 7 at 10:00 in the morning, and we're expecting around 100 people. It will take about two miles or an hour and a half. Here's our trip business card.
Do you have any questions?
Is this the first year?
No, we've been in Girl Scouts for three or four years.
Three or four?
Yeah.
How much did you raise last year? Where's the money, girl?
They haven't done the walk before.
So it's the first time you've done the walk?
It was the first year.
Oh, sorry.
Very wonderful presentation. So we do have a motion in front of us to approve the use of town streets and ways for the Girl Scout troop 74151 walk to benefit the Milton Animal Shelter that will take place Sunday, April 7, 2013, at 10:00 a.m., contingent upon approval by the police.
Second motion.
Motion's made the second. Any further discussion? Saying none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. You've got your walk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now citizen speak. Have you just stated your name?
I'm Deborah Felton, Executive Director of Fuller Village. I don't know if we can compete with the Girl Scouts.
That was a very, very hard act to follow, but as a former teacher here in Milton, I can truly appreciate what these kids just did. My name is Betsy Buckbinder, and as I said, a former teacher here at Milton. A longtime resident, town meeting member, trustee of the hospital, so you can see, I have a vested interest in the well-being of Milton and the residents who live here. What I have here is a petition, and Dejebu has just set in because five years ago, I presented a similar petition relative to traffic to the then-decided people, and I believe Marion McCetrick was the chair at that time. This petition has 300 signatures on it, and let me explain. By affixing these signatures to this petition, the residents of Fuller Village are voicing their opposition to the proposed 300-unit residential housing complex opposite Fuller Village on Brushhill Road. You will note in this petition the multiple issues that concern us about that development. It is a daily challenge for us who live there, the traffic configuration. Traffic on Brushhill Road is a narrow, two-lane road. It's already nightmarish, with lengthy rush hour backups, and with no potential for adding lanes to alleviate that congestion. As an aside, last Friday evening, my family and I attempted to go to the grill around the corner. It is a short walk, if we were to walk. The drive took us exactly 21 minutes. And the potential increase of many more vehicles traversing Brushhill Road is daunting. And as I said, five years ago, a similar petition was presented to then-selectman, Marion McCetrick was the chair, and we presented to her our traffic concerns. Now, that petition, as does this one, noted the traffic configuration as menacing to the safety of Fuller Village residents and anyone, anyone who uses Brushhill Road where it meets Naponton Valley Parkway and Milton Street. The town and state officials have recognized the inherent danger to those who must use those roads on a daily basis. Our present concerns, as stated in this petition, in this petition, five years after the initial petition, and once again, remains the same issue, traffic, the traffic conditions. There would certainly be an increase in traffic volume should the proposed housing development be approved, and with a further negative impact on our community at Fuller Village. Please, you will note also our concerns for the environmental impact such a development poses for this area. It would directly affect Fall Meadow and what has been designated as a core habitat with species that are of conservation concerns. These are great issues to those of us who must daily, daily fight the issue of that traffic. We trust that you will recognize our concerns and our opposition to the proposed development. Thank you very much, and I will leave this petition.
That's great. We normally don't comment, but I have just a few words about the Mill Creek development. Because I think all of us echo the concern about traffic. I don't know. One of the standards they do have to meet under 40B is they cannot make traffic any worse than what it was before the project was built. I don't know how they're going to do that. It seemed like a almost impossible task. So, yeah, it really is a concern of ours. Any environmental concerns, certainly, because it is, you know, a beautiful area, Fall Meadow. We will make sure all those are vetted to the best of our ability. But realizing that it is a 40B project, you know, they'll file for comprehensive permit, the zoning board of appeals can accept it or deny it, but if they deny it, then they can appeal it to the state, and as long as they convince the state that everything's been mitigated, they will get their permit. You know, so we'll do whatever we can, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, we thank you in advance for whatever you can do for us. Thank you.
A quick comment, Mrs. Buckbinder.
Yes, sir.
I've known you for years, and I want to thank you for your continuous input into the community. And as far as this latest petition goes, if I lived up there, I'd sign it in great big letters like John Hancock signed.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board? I'll get you next.
Hi, my name is Virginia Corcoran. Thank you for having us this evening, and I am here with regard to Runway 33L. And I live at 36 Highland Lane, and that is Precinct 9 in Milton. I've been here for 24 years. I am opposed to the proposed addition of the FAA for another permanent runway path over Milton, which they are calling Runway 33L. I am delivering right now additional letters from people in Milton that have sent their letters to Terry English in opposition. And at the February 7 meeting, I also delivered numerous letters to, from Milton citizens. Most of these letters state that it would be, the proposed flight would be a burden to them and their families and the environment, and would be devastating to their home values, making Milton a less desirable town to live in. We appreciate that 30-day extension that our selectmen were able to give us, and we hope that they will give careful consideration in review of the numerous and confusing, conflicting documents provided by the FAA. We, the citizens of Milton and the selectmen, are fortunate that previous selectmen had appointed Judy Kennedy of Milton as our liaison of the town to interact and obtain knowledge from the FAA. Her information in this instant is invaluable, and her alerting the selectmen and the public is what her job is. It is unusual that the FAA did not attend the meeting on February 7, and I'm assuming that the selectmen have heard nothing from them to date. I am also submitting to you documents prepared by Beth Neville, who was not able to come tonight, and we are calling this Runway 33L, the Milton Historic Educational and Recreational Corridor. This document includes numerous areas in Milton that the proposed Runway 33L flight path from Logan Airport would directly impact causing noise and environmental pollution to the number of places that I have on. I have two sheets for each of you, and it totals 59 spots in Milton that all Milton residents enjoy and many non-residents alike enjoy. I went online the other day to take a look at the petition known as change.org that each of you were given the other day for your review and to read the comments, and I realized that many citizens are suffering from the current Runway 4 and 27 that are in place, and we do realize that there's nothing that can ever be done with those. We can only say that by adding Runway 33L on top of those two would be devastating to the entire town. We feel it is only fear that Runway 33L be left as it currently is and continue to have numerous towns in this, on the South Shore, share the burden of these planes by being distributed equally. We, the citizens of Milton, feel it is imperative that the selectmen value and listen to Judy Kennedy, our town-appointed liaison, as she is there to protect Milton's interest and advise the selectmen of this complicated matter. After learning so much about the potential of Runway 33L being implemented over Milton, given the short response time by the FAA, we feel it is too big of a decision to make to let the FAA back into our own backyards, that this matter needs further professional analysis. The town of Milton is full of beautiful wildlife, life in natural beauty, as well as a town full of historic buildings being preserved by all. Our environment is being compromised by the noise pollution coming from far too many planes. Blue Hills Reservation is used by all Massachusetts citizens and must be preserved, and we thank you for all of your hard work on behalf of the town of Milton.
I'm Cindy Christensen. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 7. I'm here to encourage you to request that further study be done on the quality of the data and the scientific approach that was used in the analysis regarding the change to the flight pattern for Runway 33L. I'm a research statistician and have been looking at this over the last month. My motivation is that I'm, for being here, is that I'm concerned that decisions are being made based on bad science, faulty data, and/or misleading representation of the data. I live in the town, in an area of Milton that will not be affected by the change by the departure path for Runway 33L. We, my area of town already has a highway in the sky over us. A month ago, I asked for and received the Milton data that the FAA used in their study. I expected at the time to confirm the study's conclusion, a very little change in noise burden for Milton, and even said that to Terry English when I talked with her about getting the data. However, after doing my own analysis and becoming more familiar with some of the literature and government documents on aviation noise studies and metrics, as well as talking with other citizens and experts, I now think the science used in the study, including the yearly average DNL metric, is flawed, and the study results and the presentation of the results are misleading. I also think there is evidence that some of the data are faulty. The DNL is not a metric representing a decibel, as it's called so in the report. To try to describe just how bad this DNL metric is, I want to give a description of CNEL, which is a one-day measure out of the 365 days that go into the estimated DNL values. A CNEL is calculated, is a calculated average over a 24-hour period. Because it is calculated based on a mixture of noises throughout the day and night, it's not possible to hear what a CNEL of a certain value might sound like. A deafening explosion on an otherwise quiet day will yield a low CNEL due to the averaging. A CNEL is one day of a DNL, so a resident could have a deafening explosion around their home every day of the year and still not show up in this report as having a noise burden from the Runway 33L. It's bad science to use this flawed metric to assess noise burden and changes in noise burden. Even if the DNL were a valid metric, the DNL calculations from Milton and several surrounding areas use data from just one noise monitor in Cunningham Park. The next closest monitor is in Dorchester. There's no noise monitor south of the one in Cunningham Park, and no noise monitor along the Hyde Park-Milton line where the proposed plan will most likely affect. This means that the estimates of noise burdens must be extrapolated from this one location to all 652 census block centroids in Milton.
Just, you did send an email, and I did read it. I understood some of it, not all of it.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk with you more about it.
What I would like to do, because we are going to respond, and I would like, and you've obviously done a lot of work on it. Rather than getting into so much detail right now, could we ask you to give us a hand when we put that letter together?
Yeah, I've offered that, yes.
And we'll accept that offer.
Yeah, for citizens to understand a bit about averaging also.
Okay, if we could, you know, if you can do it in a few minutes, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've got less than a quarter of my page left.
Okay, okay.
There's a problem with at least one data point out of the 40 or so that I looked at in more detail. Anytime that there's one data problem, particularly in these large merge data sets, there likely are others. This particular data point shows no population for a DNL estimate that's greater than 45. So even if DNL were a valid metric of noise burden, some of our residents' noise burdens were unfairly weighted in this report. Again, I think that there needs to be further study, that you can't go, move forward, make decisions with flawed data and flawed study.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Flightman from Crown Street. I am a town meeting member, Precinct 1. And I know that you were left the petition, but I just want to make sure you all do have the copies. Right now, we have over 500 signatures. We would love to get 10% of the town. I don't think 500 is nearly enough. I'd also love it to go to the other towns that are affected, and I know this isn't a question-and-answer session, but I've got a couple of questions. Would it help if the Milton Town Representatives, Selectmen, met with Randolph and Canton and Dedham? Wouldn't that have a bigger effect on contacting the FAA since everybody has been affected and those select people or town officials have made some statements how negatively their towns would be affected? If all of you got together and tried to have a meeting with Terry English, would that do anything?
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt and answer her question? Just a couple of nights ago, I met with Paul Mione, the president of the Randolph Council, and Representative Bruce Ayers, who represents parts of Randolph, and proposed to them what you're suggesting. I think that the affected communities, Milton, Randolph, Canton, Dedham, Holbrook, et cetera, should send one united correspondence to Terry English and let them know that all, it's not one community, it's all the affected communities, and that we're united.
That makes perfect sense, and the hard copy of the petition and the comments will have to be sent to her. We'll take care of that, but it'll be sent to her so she has them and she can add it to the record, because I do know that every comment that she's getting becomes part of the official record, because I had sent her an email, and that was her response to me. So it's very important that any signatures and any comments do go directly to her.
Mrs. Flightman, just so that you'll know, your correspondence is now here, as are others. So, there's quite a bit of correspondence that's now come in, and thank goodness, and it's my understanding that the FAA is required to listen to public opinion, even though they seem in practice to like to ignore it.
I think it's great that we got a pushback on the comment date, and I know that currently there isn't a new implementation date. Have any of you heard anything about a new implementation date?
No.
Which was originally March 7.
None.
And the other thing that I did want to say is it seems awfully coincidental to me, but since we had the last meeting where we're all complaining about this, all of a sudden, the flights going into Logan seem to have gotten a lot worse. I'm hearing that a lot first thing in the morning, and a lot of the people that are here are saying the same thing. Somehow, I don't think that's a coincidence.
Again, I have a couple of concerns. Number one is, we do have still, even though we did get an extended comment deadline, it's still a fairly short period of time to try and, I mean, we can explore the possibility of trying to get the other towns to make one, but you are dealing with three bureaucracies.
And time is of the essence.
You risk, you very greatly risk missing that deadline if you try that.
I would think that...
I mean, it's hard enough for the three of us to do something, let alone three other towns.
And I think that the FAA wanted that way. That's why originally we only had a month to respond.
Probably true.
But they may not have thought that as many people picked up on it as did, and that it would become such a big issue. I think that's really what they wanted, for it to sneak in and for it to just go away.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned that we get our comments, and I, you know, we'll have Cindy help us in terms of the technical background stuff, because I think she does make a lot of good points in that.
And something that else should, one of you ought to make note of this, something that really should be brought to their attention, because I did some research on who wrote the report and who did the construction on the runway, and they're one and the same company, which I think is a huge conflict of interest. It's a company called HNTB, and their offices are in Park Square. But they did the construction, and they did the report. So, anything that they're going to write is going to make it look positive, because they want it to go forward. They did the work. Why wouldn't they? And I'm sure not a lot of people would pick up on that particular fact. But when I went through and looked at the report and looked at who wrote it, and then I went in and looked at who did the project, it was one and the same, because they're a huge transportation consulting firm.
Yeah, I honestly don't know if that's unusual or not, but I hear what you're saying. You know, in that particular instance, I don't know, but...
And it would seem to me that's why our federal government has a checks and balances system. It should be the same in the private sector.
Yep, so, okay, but in any event, we will respond to it.
What do you think your timing is to get the letter out?
We will start working on it as soon as we can, so next week, we'll start working on it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Hi. My name's Claire Keating. I live on Harlan Street, and I'm also a town meeting member of Precinct 5. And my topic is just, it's regarding public skating at the Yulin Rink.
Sure.
So, my letter is addressed to the Board of Selectmen. I want to say, at a prior meeting, Town Planner Clark informed the Selectmen that the public skating hours at the Yulin Rink had been increased by 40% since Curry College took over the management of the facility. What Mr. Clark did not mention was that the increase has occurred during the hours of the week that our children are in school. The fact is that since the rink has been under new management, public skating has been reduced by 50% or more during the weekend hours. The only consistent weekend public skating hour is Friday nights from 7:00 to 7:50, just 50 minutes. There has only been one or two Saturday afternoon sessions since September, and the Sunday public skating hours have been inconsistent. Prior to the new management at the rink, there were two hours of public skating on Friday nights, two hours of public skating on Saturday afternoons, and two hours of public skating on Sunday afternoons. These hours were consistent from November to March when DCR operated the rink, and they should return as permanent hours for our children. The number-one user group per DCR documentation is public skating, as you can see on the RFP that was issued. Why has the town of Milton allowed the new management to reduce the time that residents and our children can go public skating on weekends? Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board?
My name's Andrea Doherty, and I'm here tonight as an abbot to the state yard on Granite Ave, as are many neighbors of mine. There are over 50 families in our neighborhood directly across the street from the park and ride, and there are dozens more further up on Granite Ave. We are part of Milton, not Dorchester. We feel that a hotel, among other things, built across from our neighborhood would be very detrimental to our lives. We can't imagine that anyone would agree that a hotel would belong in a residential area. It would only bring trouble to Milton. We understand that the town is looking for revenue, but this is not the solution. We hope that the town of Milton would not move forward to build anything on this lot without the support of the neighborhood. We hope to be able to work with the town to make sure that this land becomes a welcome improvement for the families who call this wonderful, child-friendly area their home. We understand that there are many people here who, right now, fear that they're on threat to their homes with the proposed additional flight path. We understand your concerns, because we live directly under Runway 4, right. And we support you and your flight, and your fight, so please support us. Thank you.
Thank you. If you do want to stay around, we, Brian Joyce is here, and we are going to be discussing that a little bit tonight. The discussion is pretty much to put a study committee together.
Was that my cue?
That's your cue.
Excellent.
Yes, we'll get to it.
Good evening.
Let me give a brief history of the state yard on Granite Avenue. About fifteen years ago, in the Weld administration, there was a secretary of transportation by the name of Karasiotis, and he was looking to get rid of some so-called surplus state property. And I had approached him in the administration and had worked an agreement where that eleven acres would be donated to the town of Milton. We would have gotten that for free. And it could have been any one of a number of things. It could have been parkland. It could have been some tax-producing land that would have taken some of the burden off our residential property taxes, allowed us to invest in our schools and public safety and the like. But there was immediately opposition, a letter went around with, I think, you know, I remember when I started out of college, I worked for AT&amp;T, and there was, we used to go up against the IBM salesmen. And the IBM salesmen used to often trade in what they called FUD, Fear, Uncertainty, and Doubt. And so they'd suggest that something bad's going to happen if you didn't buy their product. And sometimes, I think we in politics are guilty of the same thing, in trading on people's fears and uncertainty and doubt. And I want to be very, very clear. I actually wrote a letter to this neighborhood about ten years ago. I called over to the Heritage Hall today to try to reserve a date to cordially invite people to a neighborhood meeting. I said ten years ago, and I'll say it again here tonight, I do not support any reuse of that yard that is not supported by the affected neighborhood, because that's your most valuable possession. Whoever just said, I think it was Ms. Dougherty, said that we could work together towards something that is a positive addition to the town. I think that would be wonderful. Now, people have jumped the gun and suppose that there could be a hotel. There could be. There could be residential development. There could be parkland. There could be an infinite number of potential uses of this property. And as I said, I am steadfast that there should be no adaptive reuse that is not a positive addition to the town, but importantly, a positive addition to the people whose property values is most directly impacted. And toward that end, as I've said to the selectmen now, I think on three occasions, and I had hoped to get a article into the town meeting, but the warrant was closed, I would politely ask the selectmen to appoint a board of citizens, a committee of citizens, to study whether the town should acquire this parcel of land, and if so, for what use. We have an opportunity, I think. Now, fifteen years ago, because there was this great fear, and I think a former elected official sent out a letter, and I think a letter went out this time that was perhaps, you know, got people unduly alarmed. Fifteen years ago, we could have had the property for free, and we could have had all eleven acres. Now, what the state is offering is just the six acres, which is the park and ride. And there would be a cost. Under state law now, there is a cost. I'm working in the upcoming transportation bond bill to minimize that cost, and certainly, the town would not bear anything. It seems to me that any proper development would require the developer to pick up that cost. There could be an opportunity to seriously improve our town and your neighborhood. Think of the possibilities, including adding, you know, making Granite Avenue, instead of a, you know, a racing strip, a wonderful boulevard. Have sidewalks, have plantings, have some welcoming development that has very little, if any, burden on the town, but great benefit to the town and to your neighborhood. And so what I had suggested is that you put together a committee, have a very open, very honest, very transparent, and indeed lengthy process. This could take a couple of years. Have it wide open, and make sure that there are people from this neighborhood on that committee. And I even have the names of the folks that I heard from. I see Mary here. I got a call from my friend Jack Cook, Paul Dougherty, Bernadette Kernan O'Flaherty, Elizabeth Carey, Brian Pellegrini, Helen Grinley, Bill Bennett, Chris and Daniel Shirley. I know Chris is a town meeting member, and I spoke with him at town meeting a year ago and said that if we do this, we should make sure you're on the committee. So I think that, I understand that there's concerns. I understand that it's the most important asset in your lives. I will not support any future use, and I said this in a letter about ten years ago, I sent around to the neighborhood when there was concerns before, that is detrimental and not supported by the neighborhood. But I think we have an opportunity. We missed that opportunity fifteen years ago. At the very least, we should certainly explore this possibility and make sure we're not dealing in fear, uncertainty, and doubt, but we're dealing in hard facts. What can we do with this wonderful asset, six acres along the banks of the Napauntet, proximate to the highway, that clearly has extraordinary value? What can we do to turn this asset into something that benefits the entire town and especially the Director Butters?
I totally agree, Senator Joyce. I mean, I can't speak for the other two selectmen at this point, but, you know, personally, I'm, you know, pretty excited about the possibility of getting those six acres and putting them to some productive use. I do agree that the residents should have a voice, any loud voice, you know, the abutters in that process, and I will propose a motion right now. I don't know how close we are to this actually becoming a reality, but you could probably answer that better than I.
Well, what's happened, we've, I have an update here on the process, but cutting to the quick, the Mass Highway had to kind of make sure all other state agencies, they get essentially first dibs, and they've all taken a pass on it.
Okay.
They're compiling all the information for us now to ensure that there's no environmental issues, that the area's clean. There's a question as to what the value would be. I'm going to argue the value would be not the highest and best use. In other words, not the most expensive option, but what the town ultimately uses it for. That should be the marker. So there's some logistical things to work out. I can make this, I'm hopeful, working with the administration, that I can make this process take as long as we want and as long as we need. And again, I definitely want this neighborhood on board, and I'm positive we can come up with something that's beneficial, it's going to produce revenue for the town, but it could take us a year, it could take us six months, it could take us two years. So I think that asset will still be there for us, and I think the time is appropriate to go ahead and make that motion respectfully and, you know, look toward. And I don't know if you want to talk about how many members are on the committee, if you have seven or whatever number it works. We have some extraordinary talent in the town in terms of folks that could comment on development issues, folks that could comment on environmental issues, on traffic, on property values, on, you know, there's a lot of talent in this town that I suspect would be willing to serve, and I suspect you'll have, you know, good participation from the neighborhood as well.
So that being said, I will make a motion to appoint a committee. We won't appoint it tonight, but it will be a seven-person committee, at least. Two of the members of that committee would be people from, you know, the Courtland Circle Thistle Street area, and to study the potential uses of the Park and Ride area. That committee also work in conjunction with the current master plan committee that we have, because there can be a lot of productive feedback from that committee, I think, to this study committee. And we'll work out the logistics of it at our next meeting. But the motion would be a seven-person committee, at least two of the members from the neighborhood. Let's give it a second, the motion. Any motion we made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Paula, would you reread that motion?
I will, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
The motion is to appoint a committee of seven people, two from the Granite slash Courtland Circle area, to study uses of the Park and Ride parcel and work with, who we work with?
Master Plan.
Master Plan Committee.
I can support the motion with the proviso that, to me, after family, the next thing that comes in second place is neighborhood, and if you live on Courtland Circle or in that area, if you don't want it, I won't want it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Brian, how much, how much money are we talking about?
I'm unclear yet. I'm going to make as little as possible.
DCM would set the price.
I'm working on that. But, and let me just comment a couple of other things, unless you want to go ahead with the vote?
Yeah, let's go ahead with the vote.
Just one more.
Oh, sure.
And how would we pay for it?
Well, that's what the committee would work on. So, for example, let's say the state came back and said, "We want a hundred dollars for this property." You know, it's clearly going to be more than that, but just whatever number it is. Seems to me that one of the things this committee would look into is what acceptable proposals are out there from developers. It could be single-family homes. It could be parkland. It could be, it could be, you know, it could be any one of a number of things that would pay that fee, so the town doesn't have to pay anything, and generate revenue right away. But there is going to be some transfer of money to the state, which we didn't have fifteen years ago. Now it's required by law. I'm looking to make a little change in upcoming law to make that de minimis. And it's also, by the way, any development, presumably, this committee would come back to the selectmen. Anything would go to town meeting, and it would also have to go before planning and zoning, whereas now, state land, they're exempt from all that. They could do whatever they wanted there right now. So it actually gives the town a lot more control and additional revenue.
I understand this is unzoned land right now, so it would have to be zoned.
Yes. It increases the protections for the neighborhood.
Can anybody bid on this, private developers? Or municipal?
I think you'd have an ethical issue, Dennis, but yes, I think I'm being facetious. But presumably, yes, it would be, it would be a bid process, and the criteria, you know, the town doesn't have to accept the most expensive bid. It's the one that the majority thinks is the best benefit.
The state doesn't have to accept.
I'm not sure I can understand. It wouldn't be a competitive bid, the town against other developers.
No, no, no.
It would come to the town, and the town would accept bids from developers.
Town's going to get, town's going to get it first, Dennis.
That was the question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Done.
Unanimous. Okay.
Okay, so I honestly believe, hope that has answered your questions. I'm still going to send a letter around the neighborhood. Perhaps we won't have need for that neighborhood meeting that we had called to arrange today. And I'm sorry I wasn't at the planning, master planning committee, I had a conflict in another town, but I had heard of your concerns and I wanted to address them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
Senator Joyce, before you leave, one, off this topic, we are going to have, I don't know if you've even heard about it yet, we are going to have a home rule petition on firefighter pickings coming forward, which will be a rather unique home rule petition, because we'll call for a very strange kind of override vote. It would be a half-million-dollar override that we put in a special fund to pay for firefighter pickings' medical expenses. The next year, the override would just be enough to replenish that fund for whatever was used out of it. But it does require a home rule petition, and I guess my question is, can we count on the support of the legislature?
Absolutely. Emery has already contacted me on this, and this will go through very quickly, as soon as you get it to us, get certified by the, well, actually, in this instance, it would come from the unanimous Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't even think it has to come from the town clerk, but whatever the certification is, as soon as we get it, we'll file it, we'll get it through. She's already contacted us.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, item six on the agenda is a public hearing of a conduit on High Street. Hi, how you doing?
Good evening. My name is Renee Rex Park. I'm here to have a consultation. I request a random location to install approximately two feet of conduit in High Street, which would allow us to provide electric service to Seventeen Canton Avenue.
Okay. Just a new, a new development, new house?
I believe it's renovated offices.
Okay.
Oh, that's...
Right, the intersection of High and Canton.
Okay, I know, yeah, I know exactly where you mean. Yep, okay.
Is that the old, the old building?
Yeah.
On Adams Street, right? It's at the, right, yeah. Down there on Adams.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
So it would just be coming from the sidewalk in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
About two feet.
Okay. Are there any abutters that have any concerns? Not, we do have a motion in front of us.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve a request from NSTAR for permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary wires and cables there, and to be located on the High Street Westerly at Canton Ave, a distance of about two feet at pole fifty-six slash five, contingent upon the applicant's willingness to relocate the proposed conduit and pole riser as necessary to accommodate the town's reconstruction project on High Street and securing a right-of-way excavation permit prior to the installation of the permit.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven on the agenda is a discussion with our town accountant, Amy Dexter. And we have a couple of things to talk about tonight. So the first thing is the Capitol Improvement and Planning Committee reconvened to take a couple more votes, and you can explain that to us.
Yeah, so the planning, Director of Planning had submitted a potential article for the annual town meeting warrant for design engineering for East Milton Square. The warrant committee requested that go to the Capitol Committee for their consideration and approval. The Capitol Committee did meet and voted unanimously to recommend that as an additional item to be added to the Capitol article that's to be included in the May town meeting warrant. In addition, we voted on water and sewer items, one each. So the East Milton Square Design Engineering, they're recommending, or the committee is recommending three hundred thousand dollars. For the Water Department, we are recommending twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for leak correlation equipment, which would allow the Water Department to monitor some of the billing done by the MWRA. And for the Sewer Department, we are recommending sixty-nine thousand dollars for the replacement of a K-680L backhoe loader, for a total of an additional amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. All of these items would be potentially bonded, the water and sewer coming out of the water and sewer funds as opposed to the general fund. So it would be, would not affect the tax rate, but would affect the water and sewer rates. But it's minimal amount.
Just for a point of clarification, the East Milton Square Design and Engineering was originally a town meeting article.
Yeah.
Warrant article, and the warrant committee decided not to recommend not funding that. We do, and I think part of the reason is there just wasn't enough information available at the time. We have since got a scope of services and a pretty good price estimate on what the, what the planning and design will cost. It's slightly less than this three hundred thousand. It's two forty approximately. The three hundred thousand is the estimate of what it would take to complete the project, million, about a million three to complete the project. We have a million-dollar grant and the other three hundred thousand. We may never use that whole three hundred thousand. All it is is bonding authority. So initially, all we'd be using is whatever it takes for planning and design.
Which is two forty, right?
Which is, the estimate's two forty, yeah.
So the sixty, the balance of sixty will go with the million?
Yeah, that's construction money.
But we need one point three, right?
We need one point three, and there's a possibility that we get a master's grant to supplement the thing, and if we do, then, you know, then we don't need the full amount.
I see.
So it gets us at least the authority to be there, you know, and to make sure we don't lose the million-dollar grant.
Right.
And we can bond that, what, five years, correct? Seven years, five years? So, it gets us at least the authority to be there, you know, and to make sure we don't lose the million-dollar grant. And we can bond that, what, five years, correct? Seven years, five years?
Well, it's five years because it's design-related, but in the event that we do appropriate the full million three, then it could be bonded longer. Just at this point in time, because there's not an appropriation for the full project, we had to base our estimate bond life over the five years. Just in case the project doesn't go forward, you can't bond design over more than that.
Okay. Do the motion.
Can you speak about the water, the leak correlation?
Like, the technical side of it, I'm not that great on it, but...
But I know we had problems with the meters.
Right. This equipment's going to allow the DPW director to, I don't know if this is the right word, but keep better tabs on that, maybe be able to tell if they're billing the right, I don't know if you'd call it usage or what, but it's, that was number-one priority on his list. Out of everything for the Water Department, he requested was that because he felt it was really important to be able to monitor that and to be more comfortable with what the town of Milton's getting built from them. I'm not sure how the equipment works or exactly.
Right, because it's my understanding that when he turned the meters off last year, and he came back the next morning, the meters had actually been running.
Yeah.
So, we were paying for water that wasn't entering the system.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think this is money well spent.
Right. I agree. So, I will make a motion to approve and forward to the warrant committee an additional capital improvement request of $396,650 to cover the cost of design engineering for East Milton's deck, leak correlation equipment, back hole loader for the Sewer Department, as recommended by the Capitol Improvement Committee.
Second.
Much may it second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
None.
Unanimous. Okay, number two. And this is going to be, this was a thought that I had, and I guess it's probably the accountant in me, that we have a recurring town accountant quarterly meeting to just kind of go over key budget items, budget versus actual, just to kind of keep the selectmen abreast of town finances and where things stand. So, this is the first of those. We have information through December 31st in our packets, and it is a little bit lengthy. Why don't you explain it, Amy, in terms of what we have in front of us?
Okay, so, this report Tom and I refer to as a flash report, meaning it's giving you at a point in time where the town stands budget versus actual year-to-date. So, I prepared this report for the six months ended December 31st of 2012. The first column, the first page is a section on revenues. I summarized those revenues pretty much in line with how they get reported on the tax recap, how we budget those items. So, this is summary level. And then the rest of the pages are related to the departmental expenditures. And then I have a separate page for the Water Fund and a separate page for the Sewer Fund. So, basically, the first column is the budget for the 12 months ended June 30th of 2013. The second column is any items that were encumbered at the end of June 30th, 2012, into fiscal '13. Next column is reserve fund transfers to give us a total. So, this is the total that we would have available to compare to the year-to-date expenditures. Just keep in mind that that total is for 12 months. I'm only reporting six months of actual expenditures. So, at this point in time, the budget should be significantly more than what we've spent, or else there's a problem. I haven't noted any issues. As part of my ongoing weekly review of the accounts payable warrants, the payroll warrants, I'm looking at this very closely. I don't sign a warrant to pay a bill unless that department is within their appropriation. If they don't have an appropriation left, that bill can't get paid unless there's a plan to pay that, which I'll explain later, because there is one department in that situation. So, year-to-date, June 30th, year-to-date, December 31st, 2012, the town has collected revenues of $38,304,328. First page. This is cash basis. The town reports their books on a cash basis. So, this is actually money that's come in that we book as revenue. The total budgeted revenues for the year for the 12 months ended June 30th are $82,816,433. So, there's a difference between budget to actual of $44,512,136.
So, about 46% of our projected revenues have committed in total. If you look at property taxes, it's almost spot-on. You'd expect property taxes to fail to even over the year because it's four quarterly bills, and we've collected 49.5% of our budgeted property taxes. Motor vehicle excise, on the other hand, far off, and I suspect that's just timing of when the bills go up.
Right. The bills don't usually go out till, I think, February, so, January, February. So, those collections should just be coming in now, between now and the end of the year. So, if you, that's not a very good indicator, really, at this point in time. You can't annualize that. You can't say that that's six months, so multiply it by two, and wow, we're really far, you know, far above or far under.
But come February, February, March, you should have a much better idea of where motor vehicle excises are coming in. Because that is our, well, outside of local aid, is our second-largest revenue item.
What about other departmental revenue?
That's just...
Seems that you've collected way more than you've budgeted.
Yeah, the percentage is extremely high, but the dollar amount's only $23,000. So, in the scheme of things, it's not a large portion. I have to look at my details to tell you exactly what's in that.
But this is just for six months, right?
That's miscellaneous things, right?
Right, this is six months actual.
But that cannot be guaranteed either, that that's really on, you know, an even trend throughout the year, because those could be miscellaneous, non-recurring items that might happen. An example of that might be if we made an expenditure in fiscal year 12, and then we got a refund of that, I can't book it back to fiscal year 12 to offset the expenditure, so it would go into non-recurring item into revenue.
The interesting, even though they're smaller items, penalties and interest seem to be tracking ahead of schedule in terms of receipts, I mean, 66.3%. And you'd expect that that would be relatively consistent throughout the year. And the other one is the license and permits are 66.5% through the six months. And again, you'd figure some of those are, would be heavier in the spring months in terms of building permits and things like that, but...
Right.
So, those may be a couple of revenue items that may come in over by, you know, in excess of what we budgeted.
Right. The other thing to note is, on the property tax line, the liens went out earlier in the fiscal year, and I just noted in January there were some large collections. So, even though that's at 49%, once the liens get booked in January and they're reported on this report, you'll see that come a little bit closer to where you would expect it to be. There are some items here, I just, being the first time that I did the report, like the meals tax, I have that blank. I may have that...
You must have collected it someplace.
Yeah, it's probably on a different line item. So, I still have to fine-tune this. This was really the first pass to get something down, to try to get, you know, a report to the selectmen. But as we go, I'll definitely fine-tune it and make it a little bit better. So, if there's any changes anybody wants to see, you know, I'm open to talking about that. The other thing to note is, I've got some comments on the right because of the timing of things, I have some stuff that really could have been booked for the period ending December 31st, but didn't get booked until the first week of January. For instance, the state and local aid, that's only 22% because I have another $2 million that hit in the first week of January. So, this is a little bit, I wanted to stick to reporting to what my records say as of December 31st, but there are some items that got booked early in January that, well, again, bring these back into line. Same as the indirect cost allocation to water and sewer. That's something that comes through the warrant, that we do a check from Water and Sewer to the General Fund one time, once a year, depending upon when the treasurer says there's funds to do that. That hit in January, but I have to include it in my budgeted numbers because I wanted to agree to the warrant and everything. So, I don't see any issues really with revenue at this point.
I have a question. Under revenues, you know, I know the actual ending in December, $82,000 under fines and forfeits. What is a forfeit? I mean, a fine's probably a traffic ticket, right?
Well, I don't know as though we really have anything that qualifies as a forfeit. That would be more, I think, a question for Jim McColl, the treasurer.
And then a fine would be traffic tickets, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah. Amongst other, there'd be other things in there also.
If you were late paying your taxes, is that a fine?
That would go into penalties and interest, which is the fourth line item down.
But a violation of the zoning would be a fine? Okay.
Also, keep in mind items like the available funds, the free cash, the encumbrances, although they're not true revenues, in order to balance the expenditure budget to the warrant, to the revenues, I have to include them in there to get everything to balance out, right? So, free cash isn't really revenue, but it's factored into the budget to use for some of the items on here, so it has to be included on this page.
On the expenditures side, anything that we should be concerned about?
The only thing I have to report there is, on the elections and registration budget, we are slightly over the appropriation, $259 as of the end of December, but we have made the warrant committee aware of that. We have told them that we will be requesting an RFT. It has not been done yet because they requested back that we wait until, you know, we expect that to go more. We need an RFT to cover the rest of the year, which is not out of the ordinary, considering the number of elections and whatnot that we will have this fiscal year. So, they've just asked us to hold off submitting that RFT until the number's bigger so that they're not processing one every single week. So, as long as they're aware of that, and we're, we have a plan to get the money out of the reserve fund, that should not be an issue.
And just very quickly, the selectmen's salary and wage line item is almost 60% through six months, and I suspect some of that's because of one-time money.
It's probably related to the employee leaving.
Yes, I think it is, yeah. So, that should probably level out.
That should level out, especially with the position being vacant. There was some accrued time that was paid out that would be in there.
Right. And the rest of the salary line items seem to be relatively 48% to 50%, so reasonably...
On target.
On target, yeah. Except for some very small departments, but... Anything else you think we should know, Amy?
Not on the general fund report, unless there's any similar to the revenues on the very last page of the general fund report. There's some things like the state assessments and charges that just haven't been booked until January, so it might look like we're, you know, that we're off, or I forgot something. It's just timing of when those things were booked.
And water and sewer revenues appear to be tracking pretty close.
Right, the sewer revenues, year-to-date for the six-month period, are approximately 47% of what was budgeted. That's mainly in the user fees, the rates. The other items, the service and miscellaneous revenue is only 32%, but that's a smaller amount. We budgeted $163,000. Again, that's timing of when people are doing work. That's not necessarily something that's billed every single month.
Right.
As far as the expenditures, they seem to be, you know, right now, they look like they're under budget, but you need to keep in mind with the water and sewer, a lot of that's seasonal work, a lot of that is not steady from month to month. So, that should even out too, as the weather gets better and we get closer to year-end.
Yeah, and a lot of these things, as we go forward on this, if we have concerns, I guess we can express them through you, and approach the department heads and get answers if we need them.
Exactly. So, hopefully, the plan would be that, once everybody understands how these reports are set up and what they're meant, to convey that, if there's questions, that we can kind of talk about them before so that I can research any specific question that might be and get more detail for when I come to the meeting, I could give it to you at that point.
Okay, great.
As far as the Water Fund is concerned, the Water revenues are total 53% of the budget of $5,349. Same thing, the user fee rates are approximately 53% of the budget, so that seems to be in line. But also keep in mind that in summer, a lot more, depending on the weather, there could be a lot more water usage. So, again, that's not one that's even throughout the year, so it might look like, great, we're 53%, we're a little ahead of budget, but we've had a wet winter and the snow melts.
And this is, most of the summer months are already in here.
Right, so, it's not a concern at this point, but it doesn't mean that we'll necessarily come out at the end of the year above, you know, over budget, you know, with a surplus there. So, same thing with the service and miscellaneous, it's about 40% of the budget. It, again, it's hard to just annualize that based upon the six-month actual. As far as the expenditures go, similar to the Sewer Fund, they're 42% of the actual. One thing I should point out is the way that some of the labor in the Water, Sewer, and DPW are charged, some of those people, for instance, the DPW director is a third Water, a third Sewer, and a third DPW, which is General Fund. So, what happens is, the accounting bookkeeper will do his first three months to Water, his next three months to Sewer or General, and we're talking about changing that for the next fiscal year, because especially now that we're reporting on a quarterly basis, we want it to be, like, I know that happens, so I, when I look at it, I know, but if I'm reporting to the board, Jo and I have talked about changing that, that she'd take his weekly salary and allocate it each week so that we don't have that going forward. So, that could be why some of this looks like it's a little bit under budget when it should be 50%. It's just because it will get hit more in the end of the year, because as it's coming in. But I think there's nothing really, nothing so far that concerns me. I do feel like I have a good relationship with all the department heads, that they do come to me ahead of time if they feel like they might have a budgetary issue, or if they have something that they're thinking about doing that they're not sure they have the funds to do. We have some, a lot of communication back and forth so that hopefully that nothing, nobody will go over budget and cause a problem that way.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a discussion of Yuleman Rink, representative of Curry College. Are they here, or...
Yeah.
Hello, guys.
Hello.
Hi, my name's Rich Sullivan. I'm Chief Financial Officer at Curry College and Facilities is one of my responsibilities. With me is Kevin Burchill, General Manager of the Yuleman Rink, full-time employee of the Rink. The agenda item, as I understand it, is a presentation and review of Curry's annual report to the Board of Selectmen regarding the operation of the rink.
Yes.
So, what I might suggest is, I can walk through it reasonably quickly, and then I can expand on any points or address any other items that the board would like additional information on.
Okay.
If that works for you.
That'd be great.
And as part of that, I'll be pleased to provide some insight into the subject that Claire Keating raised earlier regarding...
Yeah, I was gonna ask what that anyways.
Yep, so, I can discuss that as well.
Okay.
First of all, Curry is in the third year of its... First of all, Curry is in the third year of its partnership agreement with the town to manage the Yulin Rink. That contract ends at the end of August this year. The town's permit goes for an additional two seasons, ending April thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. As we close in at the, right now, really near the end of our third operating season, I think we've accomplished a lot of the shared objectives that the town had for the rink with the college. Number one, first and foremost, and it was clear from the very beginning, that the town wanted the taxpayers of Milton not to assume any financial obligation or cost exposure relative to the rink, and we've achieved that. The way that was achieved was with Curry College absorbing operating losses and capital expenditures, and at the end of this season, Curry College will have net negative cash flow into the facility of about four hundred thousand dollars, about half of that being operating losses and about half of that being capital improvements to the rink. As part of the objective of the rink with the town was to make it as customer-friendly as possible, and one of the ways of doing that was expanding the season. The season's now about twenty-five percent longer, the hours of usage about twenty-five percent greater than under the last year with the DCR. One component of that is public skating hours, which are up forty percent over the amount of hours that the DCR offered. A lot of those expanded hours were on, on days when the Milton Public Schools were, are closed, which provides, you know, a great deal of opportunity for the children of Milton to use the rink. Now, with respect to weekends and Friday evenings that Claire Keating had raised, that was actually a conscious decision made by the town, and when we had an opportunity to bring an additional user to the rink, not only was it additional time that we could sell, but it was a service that the rink currently didn't offer. It was a, it was a figure skating group, and that group currently, at the time, was operating exclusively out of the Randolph Rink and now operates out of both Randolph and Yulin, greatly expanding their base of clients in Milton. When we were presented with the opportunity, we needed to come up with a sufficient number of hours to make it feasible for them to have some of their operation at the Yulin Rink. We discussed it with the town administrator, and we, what we needed was some weekend time and we needed some Friday evening time. We also discussed it with Milton Youth Hockey, and what we did was take one hour of public skating time, and we got one hour back from Milton Youth Hockey, we were able to give them two hours on a Friday evening. We're also able to restructure some of the weekend hours and get them the weekend time, that being the figure skating group, and they're currently a user that buys a hundred and eighty hours of time from the rink. So, it was an important part of the overall objective of, one, expanding the programming at the rink, and, two, selling additional hours to try to lower the operating deficit that the rink was experiencing. As you may recall, under the third year, under the immediately preceding year before the three-year contract, there were reports that the DCR's operating loss was over three hundred thousand dollars a year. That's currently significantly reduced, and part of restructuring the hours was a necessary ingredient. And again, that was something that was, that the Curry College's manager, Rink, was able to structure with this potential user. We brought it to the town, it was a conscious decision, that it was a win-win situation when you couple it with what we were doing with public skating hours in, in general. And those public skating hours now go a month longer, they go to the third week of April, and they are expanded in the hours of public schools are closed.
Right. And the goal, obviously, is to make this as close to revenue neutral as we possibly can.
Right.
Otherwise, nobody benefits. If the thing loses too much money, it just goes away.
Right, yeah, right, at some point. And, and so, the key word, I think, that we've been using for the last several years now is self-sustainability, to get it so the revenues support the operating expenses and appropriate amount of capital reinvestment into the facility. We couldn't get there overnight, so Curry stepped up to sort of assume the, the investment, if you will, with the intention that eventually the rink would be able to have positive cash flow at some point in going forward. As part of those capital improvements, I believe the rink is sufficiently, significantly and now sufficiently improved aesthetically and also physically. One of the key ingredients is the low-e insulation ceiling, which improves ice quality, helps control electrical costs, but the physical appearance is also greatly improved. When we took over management of the rink, there was poison ivy growing through the walls, and the, the facility had just, over time, gotten to a point where it really necessitated a great deal of, of care and investment. So, where we are with that sustainability issue, and we've identified a number of initiatives, some of which the town and the college have taken, the, that deficit is now an operating deficit of about sixty thousand this year. But to, to bring it forward, what we need to do is to continue to have authority to make reasonable adjustments on the ice time allocation. We've had cooperation from existing users, but having the ability to negotiate with potential users, adjust time as appropriate is a critical part. I believe the college has demonstrated that it works with the users and does things cooperatively and strives for win-win situations, and my experience has been that everybody has benefited. Another important part is making reasonable adjustments to the ice rental rate. Understand that the board approved approaching the DCR regarding a modest increase for next year. That's critical, and that should help, and cut the deficit to thirty thousand dollars before cost growth, and we have some cost exposure in electrical rates, which leads me to my next item is securing a long-term arrangement with the DCR. That's necessary for, for two important reasons. One is additional capital improvement in the rink. The eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the rink is the Zamboni. At the end of this season, it'll, it'll be fifteen years old. The question is not will it break down, is the question is how often and for how long? We avoided a, a minor catastrophe this year when a hydraulic hose broke as the Zamboni was leaving the ice. Had it broke while it was still on the ice, it would have eaten through the ice, destroyed a relatively significant section of the ice, and probably taken two or three days to repair and get up and running. But we've had the Zamboni go down a few times this year. It's way past the end of its useful life. That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollar item to replace. If a rink had, had a long-term arrangement, I think the prudent thing would be get a new Zamboni, use the existing ones as a backup machine. Another important aspect of a long-term arrangement is operating decisions. For example, three years ago, we entered into a long-term forward contract for, to buy electricity while the rates were low. We went through the end of our contract, which is this August. Rates currently are about fifteen percent higher than the rate we're buying electricity at now. We're hopeful that it'll come down so next, next season, you know, rates will be closer to where we are now, but currently it's fifteen percent greater. So, that's an example of having to make short-term operating decisions when you have the opportunity to make smarter, long-term operating decisions. And the town being able to secure the long-term arrangement that it has been pursuing for years and which it thought it was close to at one point is still, you know, a critical part of the long-term success for the facility to the benefit of all of the users. Another aspect that would be very helpful is the DCR making investments in the Yulin Rink similar to what they've, we've heard they've been making in other rinks. The Zamboni is one example, another example is refrigeration system. As we understand it, the, the current refrigeration system was value-engineered down in capacity when it was refurbished twelve or thirteen years ago, whenever it was. It would be nice if that could be expanded back up, make it more efficient and safe. But again, that's a long-term decision. That money doesn't get earned back the first year over a number of years. One thing that we, we read in the papers last summer was that the DCR was actually funding a rink in Norwood. I don't know if that's going forward, or, but we've heard that the, the DCR has been making investments in another number of rinks. That's the most significant one that I heard of. I don't know, I tried to find out the current status and couldn't find it, but at, at least at one point, that they were intending on doing something there. In terms of capital improvements to the rink, in our agreement with the town, we were to make a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars' worth of gross capital expenditures over the three years. We will be at about two hundred and nineteen thousand, so thirty-three, thirty-four thousand in excess of that commitment. That includes about two hundred and nine thousand spent to date, but we know we're gonna need to replace the batteries in the Zamboni, that's about a ten thousand dollar item. We're told that we should be able to make it to the end of this season, but we're also told that we foolish for us to think we would be able to make it through another season. So, we're expecting to do that after the end of this operating season. Ice time allocations, first of all, with regard to the length of the year, when the DCR last had the facility, they operated for twenty-six weeks. We're at about thirty-two and a half weeks. That's a twenty-five percent increase, and we're, we're going to be closing the day before Little League opened on Friday, April nineteenth, but we've agreed to work with that figure skating group, and they're gonna have a competition on Saturday, the twentieth. We're gonna stay open a day longer. That's an example of what we try to do cooperatively with the users. Milton Youth Hockey this year had an opportunity to host an additional tournament, they usually host one a year, they're now gonna host two. And part of that was, we actually took a little bit of public skating time away because they needed a whole day to host the tournament. Other users adjusted their time. So, this cooperative allocation and adjustment of ice time really has been a win-win situation in a lot of cases. Every user has had the opportunity to expand the amount of time that they buy and they use the rink for beyond what they experienced with the DCR. And we've brought new users in like that figure skating group who buy a hundred and eighty hours, which is about nine percent of our ice time sales. Our management agreement, as I mentioned, is up at the, the end of August. We look forward to completing this year, and then, you know, we look for direction from the board at some point with regard to whatever process you're gonna be going through after this. Those are the highlights of the report. I'd be happy to expand on any of those items or address any other aspect of the rink that you'd like more information on.
Anybody else have any? We, we did at least see these numbers on our last meeting, so, and Bill Clark did, the two of us kind of went over them a little bit.
Bill has been extremely helpful over the past season, including the, I know he coordinates a lot of the, the town services. One of the is the plowing of the parking lot. They did a fantastic job during that blizzard to allow.
Keeping it open.
Yep, to allow us, we, we shut down because we didn't want to influence people driving on the streets till Sunday at noon, but that parking lot was in fantastic shape. They did a great job.
Actually, to be, to be perfectly honest, John Shields gets a little bit of credit for that also. He did call me as that storm was coming through and explained there was gonna be some kind of a, a big event there, and I called Anne Marie, Anne Marie called Joe Lynch, and that's how it kind of got done.
Fantastic. Well, we thank everybody involved because, you know, I was crossing my fingers, I know the town has a lot to do in a snowstorm like that, an incredible snowstorm at that, and I was very impressed with the way they were able to address that rink and keep it open, and it was going gangbusters at, you know, the noon time when we opened, it was, you know, a lot of people using it that afternoon.
Good.
Thank you.
Good.
Any other questions?
What's the procedure come August?
We don't really know at this point. We, we know we have to operate the, the rink for another two years. You know, we could probably extend Curry's contract, I'm sure, but then it's gonna be a matter of whether Curry wants to extend the contract as well, with no.
Right, and as, we understand that there's a public procurement process that's specified, and, you know, if the town's gonna be issuing an RFP, you know, as part of that, or whatever process it goes through. So, I believe where we are now is waiting to see what the town, you know, wishes to do and in what form they wish to do it, and then we'll be able to respond appropriately. The college, you know, three years ago was asked to step up, and we were happy to do so, and the town's position is it wants to continue to be supportive and be a good citizen of the town, and that was the motivation for this from the beginning.
You know, I think that, that the rink is a great community asset, just like our, our schools, and I think that since Curry's had the contractual agreement with the town, that, you know, the condition of the rink is unquestionably improved in the efficiency, you know, with the new ceiling and so on, I'm sure it's saved a tremendous amount of electricity and from my observations, and I'm up there quite a bit.
Yes, you are.
Sure am. The, the users are very happy, and I think that's all the users, whether it's the high school kids or the Curry College kids or the youth hockey kids. The confusion in my mind right now is that the selectmen did what its legislative, state legislative leaders advised it to do, and Mrs. McGetrick's out there, and she was deeply involved in this, and we spent a lot of time going through the whole process, trying to protect the current users, which, which we did, but now there's sort of like a wrench that's entered into the long-term planning, and that is statements on the, that there was a law passed that gave the town of Milton the opportunity to acquire the, the rink in terms of a lease for up to twenty-five years, which, that's necessary so that if the town enters into a contractual agreement, that long-term planning expenditures and so on fit right in. And then the wrench is, in recent months, the state has said it's changed its paradigm, and it's now not so sure if it wants to go, go by the, the law that was passed. And then if you question them and say, well, it's the law, it was passed by the legislators, it was signed by the governor, you know, what do you mean you're not gonna go by the law? And then the answer is, well, if you check the language of the law, the word "may" is in there.
It's permissive, not mandatory.
Yeah. So, that, that part's confusing, and it needs to be straightened out in terms of the town's long-range plans, in terms of it, no doubt would continue with Curry as a manager or some other manager, and whoever is running the rink, and if the town's involved, you know, you need to, you need to know long-term how you're gonna function.
And one other aspect of that is, the town has received a five-year permit, and it would have two years left on the permit, but that permit is also cancelable on thirty days' notice. So, it's, it's really a thirty-day revolving permit.
That's right. That's right. I mean, the, the town is making every effort to try and put as much pressure to bear as we can on DCR to, to make good on its promise for, for a long-term lease for that property. From, from my standpoint, when I was at the MMA meeting, I did talk to the governor about it. He said to drop him a line. I did that, haven't heard back from him. I'm sure he's got other pressing things to do, but, and, and we do have, you know, both of our state representatives and senator working on DCR, you know, trying to get them to come to the table, so we'll continue plugging away.
Understood, yep.
And we, we are gonna send, and, and Bill Clark has drafted a letter for us to send to DCR requesting the rate increases, you know, to at least help out a little bit.
Step in the right direction.
It's a, a small technical usage, but I just want to share with you one small item that has concerned me, and that is the ice time from, on Friday evening was like, let's say, seven to nine.
Right.
And it was reduced for an hour.
Right.
That always, I know, I know you said that you apparently got the okay or talked about it with the former town administrator. I knew nothing about it, I would have objected to that on the grounds that the way I view Friday night from seven to nine, I'm thinking of like middle-school kids, and I'm wondering whether I want them out somewhere where I don't want them, or whether I want to try to give them the opportunity to go public skating. I don't think, they'd be less inclined to go if it was seven to eight, and much more inclined to go if they could tell their mother it was skate until nine.
Okay. And again, that was part of our, an overall strategy to bring that user, that user into the rink, and also the expanded hours for those same students on days where the Milton Public Schools are closed. It was an interesting story. I remember going down once this season on, on one of those days where the public schools were closed, I pulled in the parking lot, I said, oh, disappointing, there's only about six cars there. Walked into the rink, it was packed, you know. Walked into the rink, it was packed, you know.
Drop-offs.
Yeah, the drop-offs. I'm just hoping they slow down when they drop their kids off. But, so, it does get an extraordinary amount of use on those days when the schools are closed.
Right. And I can understand the reason for the decision. Obviously, it, you know-
It's a balance.
Yeah, it's a financial decision. You know, as much as you hate to say it, you know, you'd love to be able to give the ice time away to everybody, but somebody's got to pay for it.
Right, and you're making a very good point. There are a lot of DCF outsourced rinks that charge for public skating. Our public skating is free of charge, and the concession operator has skate rentals, and they sell food and drink to the people come for public skating, but the rink itself gets nothing for the public skating. It's free of charge. I believe the DCR rinks do that. The ones that are still managed, only a handful still managed by the DCR, but the majority of the outsourced rinks, I've checked, they charge five dollars a person for public skating.
Even a nominal charge like that is helpful.
Oh, yeah, it would be, but, you know, we've maintained and haven't proposed an increase in that.
Any other questions? Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else you need, just let us know.
Great. We'll keep plugging away. Okay, we're over now. Item ten on the agenda is a discussion of the hospice proposal, five ninety-seven Randolph Avenue. We have Marion McGetrick and Kathy Bliss?
Yes. Hi, everybody. Is it right here?
Hi. Where have you been?
I've been around.
No.
Unfortunately. Unfortunately. So, thank you very much for inviting us to come in. Our purpose in being here tonight is simply to update, well, speak to the entire board about a proposal that's in the wind, that's coming along, that would locate a home hospice facility on the property that's across the street from St. Elizabeth's Church, which has been on the market. And Seasons Hospice, Seasons Hospice Foundation, actually, we expect will be the owner of the property, is working with Integra Medical, which is a development company that does medical-related facilities. And I can tell you that at this point now, there is a purchase and sale agreement signed, which the, with the Archbishop of Boston, and that is no mean accomplishment for both sides. Lots of, you know, things had to be worked out. There are several steps involved in such an agreement because the church has, the Archbishop actually owns the property and has to sign the purchase and sale agreement, but they also have what's called a canonical council, which has to approve, or you have to get canonical approval for any sale of real estate. That was just obtained probably five or six days ago, and that actually finalizes the purchase and sale agreement. So, that means that the companies that are working on this can now complete some of their planning documents, and then will be able to file an application with the Board of Appeals because the intention is to file for an application under section three A seven of the zoning bylaw, which is for a charitable, nonprofit use, such as a hospital or a nursing home or some other use that fits the definition.
So, that is permitted in our bylaws, but it's as a special permit?
It's a special use permit, which would mean that you have a full hearing before the Board of Appeals, and pretty much every aspect of the project, including site design, all the zoning requirements that are throughout our zoning bylaw, would be, will be examined by the Board of Appeals to make sure that the proposal's in compliance with zoning. And then there'll be various issues if the Board of Appeals has discretion about parking, for example, what's necessary for parking for the facility. That's a matter for discretion on the part of the Board of Appeals, which means the applicant has to make a good case for why they need the parking design that they planned on. So, what I'd like to do tonight is, I know in your packet you received a copy of a sketch plan for the building.
Marion, is this pending approval?
Yes.
This has to, this, we haven't even filed the application yet with the Board of Appeals.
I understand, but you're not going to purchase it, you're going to purchase pending approval of this?
It's kind of complicated, but there are conditions in the purchase and sale agreement. I'm not at liberty to discuss the purchase and sale agreement in detail. It's confidential, and that was part of what was agreed to in the purchase and sale agreement. But certainly for Seasons Hospice, it's very important that there be support for the proposal, that people be interested in seeing this happen in order to get any chance of approval from the Board of Appeals, and also in order to move forward with the project. So, you know, our position, I think, is, we'd like you to know as much as possible and ask as many questions as possible, and if there are issues that are serious, issues that need resolution, we'd like the chance to address them, if possible, now or at the beginning of that Board of Appeals process.
I understand, but I think my question is a legitimate one. If, if you purchase it and you don't get approvals, then you're stuck with a piece of land.
I, I can't, I can't tell you the terms of the purchase and sale agreement. I think it's fair to say that Seasons Hospice is not interested in doing anything else but running a hospice facility. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay, and I don't know if I even introduced Kathy Bliss, so let me back up there, I'm sorry. I'm here with Kathy Bliss. She's the executive director for Seasons Hospice, New England, and I actually would like, I'll give you an updated site plan and point out a few details that have been added and things that have been improved, I think, in the site plan, but I'd like to ask Kathy to explain hospice, a hospice facility operation a little bit, and you'd have an opportunity. She knows the details, and I think she can answer questions better and make a much better job of explaining how it all works, which is, I think, what everybody's interested in. Did you bring your material? Do you want another copy of the drawings? You probably do, right?
I'll do.
Okay, so, this is just a sketch, but this is the, I'm sorry, it's kind of small, but this is a sketch at this point. This is the architect's concept drawing for what this building will look like, and it's important to know that, to date, the concept of how the building's going to look hasn't changed. They're going to be doing a lot more detailed architectural drawings, and there'll be work on landscaping, as well as the site plan, which is this drawing, and where do you see how small the print is on this? And this, again, this site plan, as recently as yesterday, had things changed and added to it. So, this is a little bit updated from the one that you got already, and I don't even know if Kathy has seen this. And really, I have trouble reading it, I can tell you.
Yes, I think you have to get my text.
So, you know, I, let me just say, without asking you to actually try to decipher everything that's written in here, these are the things that have happened. What we've done, first of all, is, while going through this purchase and sale agreement process, we did meet with department heads, and I believe Mr. Hurley was at that meeting.
We have a core team meeting every week, and we invited Marion and Kathy, and we actually had a conference call with the team, was it the architect team or?
Yes, well, the real estate development group-
Group, okay.
-that also retains the architect.
So, at that meeting was Deputy Police Chief, the, Bill Clark was there, let's see, I was there, Joe Pronbeck was there, Joe Lynch was there, DPW Director, and everybody had a chance to address the design and concerns they might have had with it.
And they will have more chances. This was just sort of a nice opportunity for us to get some early feedback, and among the things that we talked about were adding more spaces. So, if you saw an early site plan, you'll notice there are more parking spaces in this site plan than, I think there are thirty-plus spaces now.
Thirty-nine, I believe.
And this is a discussion we had with Kathy at the meeting. Since then, they've been studying their other hospice facilities. There's no necessarily standard for hospices because they're relatively new compared to hospitals and nursing homes. They haven't been around as long. So, Seasons has gone out and looked at its own facilities and others and tried to determine what they feel the ideal number of spaces might be. So, where, this is, this is a presentation of the number of parking spaces the applicant feels they need. The fire department suggested, originally the plan called for entrance and exit on two, one entrance and exit on Reeddale Road, another one on Route twenty-eight. After that meeting, that was revised so that there's only an entrance and exit now on Route twenty-eight, and what you have there, you still see an exit on Reeddale Road. That's for fire engines to get out because the fire engine is so big that to come into a parking lot and exit, it's much better for it to be able to go out from, you know, in a different direction.
It was tremendous concern that trying to navigate, you could never take a left turn coming out of, onto Reeddale Road and trying to go, go left, and even going right would be difficult in the morning.
The traffic, the police said, "Look, you can put no left turn signs and everything else." It was just like the library situation. People, once they see that there's an entrance, exit, they're going to try to turn against traffic, and it's dangerous when you have accidents, so they don't recommend even going there. So, that's why this is revised so that there is only one entrance. There was also a service entrance towards the back of the lot. This is too bad for everybody's here, and I apologize, but I can give you the drawings to look at, and so it's better to just try to visualize this. This is a corner lot, and you have Reeddale Road, St. Elizabeth's Church, and up here you have Route twenty-eight. The main entrance and exit in the front of the building is proposed to be on Route twenty-eight. And what we did was, we moved even the service entrance to Route twenty-eight. So, instead of having a separate, small entrance so that the dumpster can be picked up and you can work on utilities or something in the building that's off Reeddale Road, that also is at the same entrance to the left of the main entrance. That means the fire department, if it has to come in and there's an alarm ringing and there's nothing wrong, but they have to turn it off, they can get at the utility box with the alarm right by the main entrance of the building. It's much quicker and more efficient, and they can see what's happening. That's what the fire department asked for. So, that's what the engineer has put into the design. There were smaller changes that you can't really see here, but they involve making sure that all of the distances from lot lines conform to the zoning bylaw. So, if it's supposed to be twenty-five feet, it's now twenty-five feet in the plan. And again, adding parking probably was a major task that had to be worked on by the engineer. There are also now measurements in for site distances at the entrances and exits, which are required. What you don't see is the landscaping plan, which is required around, there is landscaping required around parking. Our bylaw calls for it, and a separate plan is going to be filed with the building commissioner for that. I'm reviewing these, this plan with him tomorrow to see if he wants more detail on the site plan because the site plan is, basically, is the trigger for filing the appeal. Then you have to, well, first trigger is, the building commissioner has to officially deny a building permit. That's why you have to go to the Board of Appeals because you need a special permit to do this. You can't get a building permit directly. So, that said, if, are there questions about the site plan, or shall I have Kathy give you her description of hospice?
Quick question, in terms of traffic, if I'm coming from Newcombe Farms and I want to get to the hospice, I'm have to take a left. What do I have to do when I get there? Do I have to wait for the traffic going this way to take my left?
There won't be a light, no.
Well, let's just say, none of this is determined yet.
Yeah, I'm just-
Obviously, with either entrance, if you had an entrance on either street, you would have that issue. You could try having, you know, one way in, one way out.
Reeddale would be more of an issue.
Reeddale is.
No problem getting in if you're taking a left in front of the hospice, and then you just go right, probably no problem at all. It's just, in my mind, what if I'm coming from down the hill, heading this way, taking a left, got these cars taking off?
I know if I were coming toward, to the facility, I would prefer to approach it from the other direction, and I would assume that the hospice would give that sort of advice to people who are coming to the hospice.
But if you think about it, it is far enough up from the, from the traffic light at the corner of, so it's really not much different-
It's almost at the corner of the property.
-to take a left on any one of those side streets, really, if they're not, don't have a light. It's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the things that Kathy Bliss will talk about a little bit is what type of traffic you actually get with a hospice and how much you can expect and at what times. People have asked us about that, but it's basically a relatively quiet use. The traffic flow is intermittent. It doesn't occur at one particular time, and you want to have enough parking, but at times you don't even need that much parking. It tends to be a rather low visitor rate most of the time, except in particular cases. So, you have to plan for everything, but this is what I think you felt was needed, and I think the other people who've been working on the design finally decided this was sufficient. We'll see what the Board of Appeals thinks, but we're certainly interested in your opinion. Any other questions before we tell you a bit more about hospice itself? Okay, great.
You're on.
Well, Seasons Hospice and Palliative Care, obviously, we provide the hospice services for patients. The majority of patients that are on our service are on what we call the routine level of hospice care. And the goal of hospice, obviously, is pain and symptom management at the end of life, and we try to keep patients where they want to be, whether it's in their home, a long-term care facility, or an assisted living facility, wherever they want to be. And the vast majority of our patients want to remain out of the hospital. So, the problem arises when patients have pain and symptom management issues that exceed what we can effectively manage in the setting that they're in. We have contracts with hospitals, and we have contracts with long-term care facilities to be able to do short-term placement for a patient in a long-term care facility or a hospital, but the majority of patients don't want to go back there and don't want to go to a long-term care facility, you know, for fear that that's where they'll end their lives. The, the concept of hospice houses is to be able to allow us to treat a patient in what we call a general inpatient level of care at a general, at a licensed facility. And these, the Department of Public Health in two thousand and three promulgated regulations that allowed hospices to own and operate freestanding hospice houses. And the goal of that is to try to make it as much like their home, home environment as possible. So, we, we've had challenges trying to, you know, help the Department of Public Health understand that it's not a nursing home, it's not a hospital, it's really a home-like environment, although there are many regulations that we need to meet in order to be able to, with the corridors and, and access to, handicap access to bathrooms and that kind of thing. So, the majority of the hospice houses, and there are four others that are licensed in the state, this would be the fifth. They originally had intended that there would be only six licenses available, and so, but, and thought that the licenses would be used up very quickly, but they have not been. This is, the whole process started in two thousand and four. But the ones that, the places that do have hospice houses, and there's nothing in the metropolitan Boston area like that, the closest one is the one in Danvers, the Kaplan House in Danvers. There's the McCarthy House in Falmouth. There's the VNA Care Networks home and the Rose Monahan House out in Worcester, and there's one in the Merrimack Valley, but there's nothing around in the Boston area at all. So, and many patients who come to the Boston area for care, their families are already coming to the academic medical centers in Boston and would be grateful to have some kind of a facility like that located here, and Milton is a, is a perfect, wonderful residential community that really fits the whole feel that we're trying to create with the hospice house. So, what it allows us to do is to take a patient for a short-term admission and provide more intensive hospice medical care for the patient so that, you know, they might need infusions or frequent medication titrations or some other treatment that can't be provided really safely in their home. So, typically, the, the length of stay in a hospice house is about seven days. The patients come in, and many will end their lives there, but some will also go home. Once the pain and symptom management issue is, is resolved, they may be discharged and go back to their, wherever their residence is. But the, also the goal is to allow the families to stay there with the patients. So, if they want to bring, so, each of the rooms would be able to accommodate a family member staying over, so there's some kind of a sleeping arrangement in each one of the rooms. There are typically convertible couches that are actually specially made for hospice patients, families. And to try to create everything that is, will keep the family comfortable as well so that the family has access to kitchen facilities and a living room and places that they can go outside of the patient's room just for a little bit of respite themselves. So, we're proposing fourteen beds in this, in this unit, or fourteen suites, and everything is on one floor, and the goal is really to have access to the outside, the, so that the patients, we would be able to open French doors and move the bed outside if the patient wanted to, to feel the sun on their face or get some fresh air. So, so that is the, the concept behind it, and typically, the inpatient level of care is just provided for short-term. Most of the, the care is provided at the routine level, and which is in the patient's home or long-term care facility, as I said.
Now, some people have asked us what type of staff that you need, so could you just address that?
Well, it certainly would depend on the number of patients that we have there, but if, there would prob, likely be four or five staff- But if, there would probably likely be four or five staff people at a time if the place is full. With, you know, with a couple of nurses, probably two nurses and two hospice aides that help to care for the patients, as well as a charge nurse or someone that would be managing the, the inpatient facility at the max. And then usually in the evenings and nights, there are fewer people, but typically four to manage the patients.
So, I'd just like to back up for a minute and explain to you that we did, before Seasons decided that it would bid on the property, they contacted me and I said I'd like to work with them. I thought it seemed like a possibly interesting use for this site. I didn't know much about it at the time. And the first thing we did was to arrange to meet with, well, we invited neighbors who lived on the street right next to the hospice, that's Wildwood Road and right on Randolph, Reeddale Road. So, the closest neighbors got letters and I said, anytime you want, you know, we'll come and we'll talk to you about this. And they were nice enough to actually set up a meeting of a group of neighbors. And they very quickly communicated with each other. So, those who weren't there received the initial information. The purpose for that was to find out whether there was any interest at all in this concept. Did it seem like it might be better than a number of single-family houses on the site? And, and compared to other possible uses, what was the feeling about it? And, I mean, you know, nobody's, you know, the, the proof of the pudding is when you actually go to the hearing with the Board of Appeals and you find out what everybody thinks, but word kind of spreads. And the initial response, and Kathy Bliss came to that initial meeting, was, the concept was interesting. They were very, very concerned about a hospice that would be operating as a commercial facility and would require new zoning or would require that we try to get a variance, which would be difficult, I think, but you'd probably, and they said, we do support the concept, but we'd like you to pursue offering it as a nonprofit. It is a charitable use. The way, the way the service is offered fits the definition of a charitable use in Massachusetts. That went back to Seasons and they've been studying it and that's why the application has gone in, is that they have said that they are willing to do it that way. That requires that they look at their operation differently, that they own the property differently. And they've had to do some study and they're still working on it and their final plan should be hopefully ready for the application of the Board of Appeals. But I think it's important to explain the genesis of the proposal as it is being proposed as a nonprofit. I think the concept of hospice, hospice and the type of service fits very well with that anyway. But it doesn't have to be run as a nonprofit or owned by a nonprofit. They probably have a similar operation because they always, they have a particular concept of how they like to do this service and it's fairly unique. But, you know, I can't say for sure, but I, I think that that's a substantial basis for there being some support. And the other thing that appeals is that there is a need, I think, for hospice care and anyone who's used it or knows something about it, and I've had some experience in my own family, at the time that you need it, it is really a wonderful thing to have available. It's not something that you sit around thinking about most of the time because it's about the end of life and you just don't want to contemplate that most of the time. But the other thing that's good about this site is that it's across the street from St. Elizabeth's Church. And the parish and the church have been interested in the concept because they feel it will fit well with the presence of a religious institution. And parishioners will be able to have their own clergy right next door and be able to come right over and see them if they're, if they're there and they're from St. Elizabeth's or any of the other churches in Milton or synagogues. So, that's kind of how the general framework for the proposal evolved. We were sure to check in early, of course, with St. Elizabeth's Church itself and to try to communicate with parish council and people in the church. So, you know, it's important to have support from those neighbors and from, from the church. And obviously, the Archbishop of Boston had to be interested in the proposal. But the whole town is involved in deciding whether this is a good thing to do and that's why it has to go through the Board of Appeals process. So, I think we're just here tonight to give you an update, continue to ask you to consider, well, first of all, to tell us what you think we need to improve in the proposal, any changes. And you're, I'd very much like to hear from anybody after the meeting tonight. It doesn't have to be right now, if you don't think of it right, right now. And then ultimately, if you think it's a good thing, of course, we'd love to have support at the, when we get to the hearing process before the Board of Appeals. But right now, we're really exploring how best to design the site. And it's too bad, well, you know, this is a nice picture. Seasons does use a lot of landscaping and trees because they want privacy around the patient rooms.
That's right.
They try to have a little patio area and it needs to be screened. And the patient rooms, this, this is the front of the facility, there's a, there's an entryway that will be, would face Randolph Ave. And so, the shape of the facility here is actually the same shape you see because there's a wing extending here and a wing extending here. And there are some trees in the site already. If, hopefully, you know, maybe they can be kept. And if not, large trees will be part of the design for landscaping, but they don't have their design prepared yet. So, even as term, in terms of landscaping and things like that, I think feedback in the beginning creates a much better plan. So, we'd love to hear it.
Great, well, that is concept and not an actual design, but, but it is nice the way that the, the building kind of reflects the original building that was there, the cottage, to a, to a great degree. I understand originally when you did this, you were planning on using some of granite in, in this, in this wall that was right here, but they're just, it's gone.
What we did with the architect or what I did was to send him, yeah, I, well, I sent him all the photographs of the old building. The original house really was sort of, it didn't have the, the upper dormer that it had, you know, as time went on. It was really quite attractive and different looking even from the final building that was taken down. So, I sent him those old photos. And I also took photos of houses around Milton. So, I mean, I just, you know, what I, things that I thought were nice. I showed him also a photo of the Council on Aging because people seemed to like the way that building looks. And I just said, and, and he was already thinking his way, think sort of traditional Cape Cod, this is a town with a New England feel to it. And he picked up on all of those things. So, that was the reason, that was how this design came about. He did include granite in significant places in the design because I told him that they had saved the granite and it was on the site. And within a few days of it, even though the site was locked with a chain link fence, a lot of the granite had been removed. And so far, it hasn't come back. There is some stone there and they will use that, I'm sure. They won't be able to put a granite end on the building. They'd wanted to do that. And it really was a nice idea because that's the way the original building was designed. But I think they can still create an attractive building and I think they'll just be using more plavoured and that kind of thing.
And that is certainly the goal, is to make sure that it fits in the community and that it's reflective of the fabric of the community and the, the style of architecture in the community. And, and as Marion said, one of our major concerns was obviously being, the community being receptive to this because we want to be good neighbors and we want to be able to provide a service that would benefit the community as well.
The initial read that I've got on the hospice is that the neighbors are okay with it. I can remember a month or so ago, I was leaving St. Elizabeth's on a Saturday and I was approached by a woman that said to me, what's going to happen next door? And I said, oh, I heard that there's going to be a hospice going up over there. And then she said, oh, well, that'll be okay.
Oh, that's good. That's a ringing endorsement.
Well, that's one, that's nice to hear. Again, a lot of times, we do. And, but details, details are an important part of getting your final level of support from everybody. I don't, you know, when there are more detailed drawings available, they'll be passed along to the Board of Selectmen in advance of the process.
Did you say that Seasons is going to go through the process of being a nonprofit?
We have a nonprofit arm where our foundation is nonprofit and that will own the property.
And I know that you mentioned some different hospices in the state, limited in number because I think you said they just started like in 2003. Does Seasons have another hospice?
Not in the state of, not in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but we have hospice offices in 22 states.
Oh, okay. So, Seasons is big.
Yes.
If you build in Milton, would your nonprofit status be for that specific site?
Yes, yes.
That was the request that we had made of them and.
You count, I mean, is a little disappointed, but, you know, just kind of looking forward to the, the real estate taxes of, of for profit.
And we're, we're certainly willing to.
Hopefully, we can come to some kind of an agreement.
Right.
That, you know, would be better than just a, just a straight pilot agreement. You know, even, even a reduced real estate tax rate based upon property value.
Well, pilot agreements can be, I'm not going to offer, offer for the company because, as you know, these are matters for negotiation. And I can tell you that right now, they're working very hard on the management structure and the financials. So, they're going to have a, a picture of where they're going to be going into this. And I think discussions of that sort will need to be informed and everybody's going to have to communicate pretty openly in terms of what the town is interested in, what the organization feels will work so they, they still don't go under or something, you know, they need to be financially stable. And long-term too, how the picture might change because initially there'll be, you know, loans that'll have to be taken out in order to do the construction and so forth and to purchase the property, I assume. I, I don't even know the details of the financing. I know that it, it's a fairly complicated thing that is being worked on right now. I've certainly mentioned that issue, you know, let everybody know that it's likely to be a topic. And I would say it's something that should be worked on. And try to be creative about it and think about what would work for everybody and make it a positive feature of the application.
Well, I can say, I do have a heightened awareness of hospice over the past year because my, my daughter is a hospice nurse, so.
Oh, really?
Oh.
So, it's.
Does she want a job?
She's probably working already, right?
Yeah, she's working. She just got on day.
Oh, really? Yeah.
She was an eight to eight, you know, on call.
Eight P to eight A on call.
Yeah, on call. But finally did get days.
That's God's work, for sure.
Happy about that. But I do have a, like I said, a much more heightened awareness of what is involved. And it's great work. I mean, it's allowing people to, to have dignity in their, their final days.
It is very, it's very rewarding. I mean, people often will say, oh, isn't it depressing? How can you do this? But it, it's really quite amazing. I mean, the people that you meet are amazing, the courage that they have is amazing, the stories that they share with you. And to be allowed into someone's life at a very intimate time in their lives is, is really moving. And, and the staff that we have working with us, I feel blessed every day for them. They are, it's a vocation with them. It's not a job and they are the most incredible people. I, I feel really honored and, and so fortunate to be working with a group of people that are really committed to our patients and families. It's, it's pretty amazing. I started my career as a critical care nurse, you know, and it was in the days when we were torturing everyone to death. You know, you never said die, you put lines in every orifice and, and so now I feel like I'm doing my penance for all of those poor people. But at least it's great because people do have choices and it's all about choices. And it's about meeting the patients and the families where they are at this very vulnerable time and, and helping them to do it their way. And it's really about the patients and the family's plan of care and not the medical plan of care, which is, is really quite rewarding. But being able to use your medical knowledge to, you know, give them the best of, of what you can offer. And to give people choices and not have them feel like they have to do, you know, really invasive things right up until the end of their lives. And it is about adding, you know, the quality to life and adding life to days rather than days to life.
Right.
One other thing I just wanted to mention quickly, since the history of the site has been an issue in the past, not that we could solve that whole issue, but we are, I am meeting with the Historic Commission on the 14th of March to talk about what things we can do with the interior of the building, photographic displays.
And we would love to do that.
Wish I, you know, could talk more about the granite, but talk about the idea that we had for the granite.
It was a good idea.
But I know they'll have good ideas. And I know that they have a great interest in the site. And so, we should have a little bit more interesting detail that can be added as we go through the application process in, on that regard too.
That's great.
And we're truly grateful for the opportunity to have the audience with folks and to be able to get feedback beforehand so that, you know, we can incorporate people's thoughts into the whole process. It's, it's very important for there to be an investment, an emotional investment.
And I can see you've done that. I mean, based upon the meeting we had, you've made a bunch of changes that, all of which addressed, I think, the, the concerns we had already. So, it's great.
And this is just the beginning. I mean, there's a lot, a lot more iterations that this will go through during this process. But we're very grateful that, that we've had such a great response and people allowing us to come before them and take up their time to have this discussion.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you going to be meeting here more frequently or?
It's a nice place, isn't it?
Yeah, this is amazing.
We can't get.
Cable's not working up at the.
The central line's Quincy and we, we can't get a feed out to Town Hall right now.
We're meeting here, we want to be movie stars.
Yeah, it's nice. I mean, when I came in, you had so many people here, I really did feel like it was a professional studio. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Marion. I have number 11 on the agenda is discussion of Runway 33. I mean, we've pretty much hashed it out. I think we're, other, other than, I'm not sure we actually took a formal vote to, to write the letter. I think we all agree on it. So, if you want to make a motion for that, that we can kind of get that process underway unless anybody wants to have further discussion on Runway 33.
Well, I just think that we've got hundreds of emails and so on.
We'll incorporate those in.
These should be turned over to Terry English. So, that the FAA knows that there's public concerns about their 33L proposal and.
Incorporate Cindy Christian's technical analysis in there and.
There also needs to be correspondence and I think we should decide whether that should be one correspondence or a potential or two correspondence. I mentioned that communities sign a correspondence, affected communities send in a correspondence indicating that they're united in their opposition to it. And then you said, well, that could perhaps not be so timely.
Maybe what we could do is, is do our own response and then try and just get a, a short letter drafted that all the towns sign saying that we're all.
So, we could have two correspondents.
Yeah, one, one just being a one-pager, just that everybody signs, just saying that we're in, you know, we're all in agreement that this thing needs further study and, and justification before.
I do want to also just read a little bit, there's a David Godine, if I pronounce his name correctly, that last July sent a letter to us and we didn't discuss it. I did keep it.
Yeah, he was the former.
Yeah, he said it was an alternative CAC member, but I just find that his letter is almost a precursor of telling you, hey, watch out. He's saying that, he's, he talks about the fact that three out of five planes landing at the airport are flying over or close to town, disturbing a fair percentage of the population with noise and incessant traffic. So, he's saying that every effort should be made when and, when and as weather permits to spread the pain equitably. And then he's also says that I think the residents of Milton understand this and they realize it's not happening. What the Selectmen can or should do is up to you, but sitting by idly and assuming that the problem will simply go away or dissipate is untenable. Until and unless the town acts in some official capacity to register a complaint with Massport and the FAA, this problem will continue and may even get worse. So, he's right on the money. So, I think that what we are doing, if we send a letter saying that we're opposed, I think that's in conformity to what he's saying, that we're registering an official complaint.
What are we hoping to achieve, just to extend it further?
We, no, what, what are we hoping to achieve? We're hoping that we do not have any increased noise annoyance over the town of Milton and that the 33L departure, being a concentrated departure route, would increase our noise and we don't want it. So, we do not want them to implement their current proposed 33L departure concentrated route.
Now, now, the, the problem you have is they, they are saying just the opposite. Whether they're right or not, I have no idea. But, I mean, I, I can understand what they're saying, that currently by, over Milton, by the, the non-RNAV routes that are being taken, they're going over east Milton much more often and much lower than what they would be going over the western part of Milton. They'd be up at 12,000 feet.
You see, that's, that's where I have the problem, Tom.
You can't understand, yeah, because of the map you showed me, I understand.
Yeah. Well, the issue that, that I have, and, you know, for anybody watching this, I do have a pilot's license. It's for a single-engine plane. It's for a single-engine plane. And when I take off from Norwood, I'm supposed to feel comfortable and legal at seventy-five hundred feet going over the city of Austin. That means no commercial airlines can fly at seventy-five hundred up to fourteen thousand feet over the city. And all the way out to the antennas at the one-twenty-eight and then around the Blue Hills.
But they're flying lower than that or higher than that?
They're flying lower.
Okay.
Lower, yeah. So my point is, when they take off at thirty-three L and they turn left over Milton, they can't go, they can't go above seventy-five hundred feet. But they're telling us that they're at twelve thousand feet.
Right, and I, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I don't know the answer.
And then the FAA guy doesn't show up, it's then the Massport guy.
Yeah, FAA's policy, and we've, we've talked to them, I mean, they're willing to talk to us one-on-one, but their, their policy is that they will not go out to towns.
Well, I can see why they, I can see why they won't.
Yeah.
But I think the information they're giving us is completely false. And it lends itself to much more study than what they're giving us.
Yeah, and I think that there was a, a Brantree lady, Sandra Kuntz, I think her name was, and I totally disagree with an email that I read that, she talked about it, the noise would be less over East Milton with the approval of the thirty-three L. To me, that doesn't make any sense. The problem in air noise and annoyance that East Milton people are suffering, that doesn't have to do with their departures. It has to do with the arrivals, one after the other.
Right, well, I think in general, the arrivals are more of an annoyance than departures because they have their landing gear down. They're, they're coming in lower.
And they're much lower, yeah.
Much, much lower.
Yeah.
Than, than a departure would be. So that's always going to be the case. It's just the, the, the landing issue is not in front of us right now and what we're responding to is a departure.
Yeah, but the.
Is it a problem?
The president of the CAC, who lives in Brantree, who would be, her community would be helped if this went through. She says that the noise level in East Milton Square, or East Milton, would be less. She's mixing apples and oranges. With thirty-three L, you're talking departures, what's over East Milton is arrivals. I don't, I don't get her point.
Well, I think what she's saying is that currently those departures are going over East Milton and they're going over East Milton because East Milton is that much closer to Logan, lower than would they be going over the western part of Milton at, by at least two thousand feet.
Closer to the airport.
Yes. That's, I think that's all, I mean, that's the concept. You know, it, it doesn't have anything to do with, with arrivals. Clearly, the arrivals are, are going to be the same annoyance that they've always been, but.
Can Judy talk for a second?
Hmm?
Can.
Sure.
Can Judy say something?
Absolutely.
It wasn't.
I want you to come up and, yeah.
I think in my letter that I wrote to you, my email, I stated that when I was at a meeting, January twenty-fourth, at Logan Airport, I was told that the planes would be at an altitude of ten thousand feet over Holbrook. So there's no way that they could be higher than ten thousand feet over Milton.
Right, so that's what we're struggling to understand.
At Holbrook, yeah.
Right.
That's acceptable.
And my concern is because we have two RNAVs already over Milton. I think they need a lot of study because there are many inaccuracies. But we also have to look at Milton as a town and we should not be burdened if there's any other way that they can do it. And there are other ways. So I'm just looking at the town as a whole. We really need to kind of stand up for ourselves.
Yeah, and clearly we will, we will write the letter.
Thank you very much. I think we need to do that.
Not a problem.
And all the people that have been, you know, giving their opinions and opposition, I really appreciate that. Appreciate all your work.
Judy, I think what we need to prove is the actual altitude of the plane over Milton.
Right.
They're saying ten thousand feet.
They're saying twelve, actually.
They're saying twelve.
Right.
I think it's less than seventy-five hundred.
Right.
Because that's what the maps say.
I agree. And that's noisy, too.
And I believe if it was at twelve thousand feet or even ten thousand feet, we'd be okay. It would be, it wouldn't be as bad.
Wouldn't be as bad, but it still would be.
Yeah, probably not.
It would still be a burden to the community because of the pollution and everything else. And give us a third departure, you know, a third flight, third flight path.
Again, if it was.
But the altitude is very important.
Three thousand higher than seventy-five hundred feet, I think we'd be, you know.
Noise-wise, it would be less.
Noise-wise, right.
So we'll try and get answers to those or at least express the concern.
And I think we have to address the inaccuracies that Cindy found.
Yes.
Because that report needs to be.
I think Cindy definitely needs to be on that committee.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Judy.
So we're in agreement that we will draft a letter, we will incorporate all the.
Submit.
Yep, and incorporate Cindy's technical analysis. Bring up the concern of how they're getting to their twelve thousand feet. That it doesn't appear that that's the case. They're going maybe at ten thousand feet when they're in Holbrook, how can that be? Those kinds of, those kinds of things, just to incorporate them into a, a letter. And ask them to be studied further and.
Delayed beyond March fifteenth?
Yeah, for further study and.
Can I just clarify something? So you will be writing a letter saying that you are opposed to the runway?
Well, I, I think our letter will probably say that we, well, we'll, we'll state the facts and the concerns. Say that we want further study, that we want to understand why there can't be more of a shared burden of noise levels in other communities, why it has to go over Milton, period. When there were other, there were three other flight paths that they rejected, some of which did not go over Milton. So we'll certainly ask that question. You know, ultimately, we have to allow airplanes to land and take off from Logan.
But we've got plenty.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that. And, you know, we are right next to the airport, you know. You know.
Then it's going to be continuous. If they, they've already got two, then they're going to want three. And then they're going to want four, five. We'd like our children to live in Milton.
I understand, I mean.
Here without that noise.
You know, I mean, look at what they live with in Revere and East Boston and, I mean, it's. Those people probably moved there before the airport, you know. I mean, it's, clearly, it's a problem. I understand it's a problem.
I think also that it's the responsibility of the FAA to read and review these concerns of citizens.
Sure.
And that it's incumbent upon them to respond to the, to the citizens in terms of what they express. I've examined some of the stuff and I think that the points are very well taken. And I believe the FAA has the responsibility to reply to those concerns.
Okay. All right, moving on. I, you want to take a formal vote on that or just draft the letter?
It's up to you.
All right, we'll take a formal vote if you want. Want someone? I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to, to draft a letter to the FAA expressing our concerns with Runway Thirty-Three L and incorporating into that letter all the documents we received from concerned residents and the technical aspects that Cindy Christensen brought up in terms of the perhaps flawed scientific data in the, in the report and asking that there be further study and explanation and clarification.
Are you, are you actually going to say you are opposed to it? With, like.
I, I think what I'm going to say is what I just said.
But you're not actually saying you're opposed?
I think I'm going to say what I just said. I think I'm going to say what I just said.
I, I think that what you're saying is, is a very good point. But I think if we oppose it right now, they're just going to do it. If we ask for more study, it gets delayed and then we can oppose it. Because right now, we don't know what, we don't know what height the planes are at.
Who's going to study it on our behalf? Is it going to be the FAA's information or?
We, we voted on the committee tonight. They're going to study it. And, you know, together we'll oppose it then. But we have a committee, there's a committee being formed.
Okay. I can go along with the motion, but if it was me and I was doing it by myself, I would definitely use the word opposed. You know, I've dealt with this issue long enough right now that I'm willing to say to the FAA, I don't want you implementing your concentrated thirty-L departure route because it's going to cause too much noise over Milton.
Well, I, well, first of all, I mean, I want them to tell me why it has to be there, why did you reject the other ones? Let me, I don't understand that right now. You don't either.
Why not just tell them you're opposed and then let them respond?
Because if I tell them, what am I telling my opposed to? I don't want planes, private planes over there.
You're opposed to the noise. You want to protect your residents.
Everybody's opposed to the noise, but, you know, so is the next community opposed to the noise. So, so, you know, I mean, I, I can say we get more than our share of it.
Yeah.
And, and why can't it be over there and, and listen to what they, what the response is? I can ask why, how are you getting twelve thousand feet when it doesn't seem possible? Those are all questions we don't have answers to right now. So that's why I say more study, give me answers first before I say I'm opposed. I'm not even sure what I'm opposed to.
I'm opposed to a concentrated thirty-L departure route that would send plane after plane over the western part of Milton, precincts one, three, and five.
If they're so far up in the air that I'm not going to hear them, I'm not sure how opposed I am.
No.
So, I mean, that's the, you know, I, I need more facts. I don't have them.
I had an eight-year-old in my driveway just the other day unsolicited comment to me about airplane noise.
Were they departures or were they lands?
Ah, it was coming in over my house.
We're not talking about that. I mean, I wish we could, but we're not.
Actually, I made a mistake. I thought we voted a committee earlier, but we didn't.
No, we did not vote a committee, no. We're just going to draft a response and, and incorporate all those things, expressing our concerns, saying that we want additional information, we want it studied further, that we believe, we believe that some of the data may be flawed and to.
And you're going to add something, Judy Kent and Cindy Christensen to help draft that response?
Yes, yes. Absolutely. Okay. So are we all in agreement on, want to take a vote on that?
Second motion.
Okay, motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item twelve on the agenda is the East Milton Deck Proposal. It's too bad Bill Clark isn't here, but to go through this, but. I wanted this on the agenda because I realized that, you know, we've spent so much time talking about the deck itself and the parking and we really haven't addressed any of the other things to any great degree in the proposal. So this is just a kind of time to kind of look at those and, and talk about them and, and maybe understand them a little more. Now see if we can come to any consensus on them.
Tom, you, you want to talk about it now or do you want to, would you put it off to Bill who's here?
It might be better off putting it, putting it off to Bill's here because he has more knowledge than I do, certainly. Yeah, unless he's around right now. So, yeah, why don't we defer that to him?
I think it would be better.
Yeah.
Your husband's out there.
One of you.
Okay.
I want to see Bill.
Yeah. Okay, item thirteen is approval of Wallston Golf Club change of officers.
I just, I just wanted to be known that I'm actually a member of Wallston. I'm not sure if I should recuse myself or.
Yeah, maybe you should, maybe you should. I don't know.
It's just, it's an approval of.
Of officers, yeah. Yeah, you don't have any financial interest in him, so, yeah, okay. So the motion is to approve the appointment of the following members to the Board of Directors of the Wallston Golf Club. Paul Mastone, did I say that right?
Yep.
Leonard McAllister of eighty-three Holbar Ave, Brantree. Patrick Kenny, eighty-two Parkway Drive, Milton. And to forward the pertinent paperwork to the ABCC for its approval.
Second motion.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, item fourteen is approval of summer band concerts on the gazebo. And this is.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve a request for the use of the Baron Hugo gazebo for the following Tuesday evenings from six PM to eight PM for the Summer Band Concert Series. June fourth, eighteenth, twenty-fifth, July two-nine, sixteen, twenty-three, thirty, August sixth, thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven, rain date. And Thursday evening, June sixth and June twelfth, rain date.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item fifteen is approval of the annual Milton Road Race.
This is yours, Tom.
This is mine, yeah. Ran it last year, run it again this year. Hope, hope to finish it. So it's to approve a request from the Milton Junior Women's Club to use the town's streets and ways for the thirty-sixth Annual Milton Road Race to be held June eleventh, two thousand and thirteen. Contingent upon approval by the police chief and to display three A-frame signs on the following locations. Library property with the approval of library trustees, PS Middle School with the approval of the school committee and the intersection of Adam Street and Squatom Street.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And this one's a good one, the approval of the Girl Scout-sponsored Milton Kids' Road Race. I think I'm too old for this one.
I'll make a motion to approve a request from Girl Scouts troops seven-four-one-three-four to use the town's streets and ways for its second annual Milton Kids' Road Race that will take place on Sunday, May nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, for kids ages four to fourteen years of age to promote health and well-being for kids and to raise funds for a Girl Scout trip to New York, contingent upon approval by the police chief.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, appointments to boards and committees. This is a proposed motion to approve the reappointment of Paul Hopkins and Walter Buddy McDermott to races to serve through February two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And the second one is to approve the reappointment of Diane Gore as privacy officer to serve through February two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And finally, the proposed motion to approve the reappointment of Kurt Frazier to the Telecommunication Design Review Committee to serve through February two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And before we adjourn, we, we did talk about having discussion of the town administrator, but since we haven't received all the background checks, let's just put that off till the next meeting. I think we should have them by, by then, plus it'll give us a chance to review the tapes a little more.
So at the next meeting, Tom, will we reduce it to two and then?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If that's okay with you.
Okay, so.
We won't just pick. Okay, so we're going to get some background check information?
Yeah, we've already got one in.
Coming in on the four candidates.
Yes.
And then, once that comes in at March seventh, we will discuss the candidates, narrow it to two.
Narrow it to two.
And then take further action and pick one.
Same.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I just said that.
Yeah.
Sounds good, Mr. Kuntz.
Let's, let's use that as a plan. I mean, if it gets too unwieldy, then we can always push off the, the final, but.
I agree.
But let's, yeah, let's have that as a plan.
So is that all going to happen in the same meeting?
Yes, yeah, to, to narrow it down to two and then choose, choose one in the same meeting if possible.
March seventh, you can ask the plan, okay.
Okay, I'll entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second. We're adjourned.